And we will switch to our special meeting, which will call that meeting to order. And we will turn to our clerk for a roll call there.
Yes, thank you. Miller.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Gibbons.
Here.
Sinks.
Here.
Abicoga.
Here.
Thank you. All are present.
Okay, so any comment from the public on matters not on the agenda?
Nope.
And any messages from our clerk?
No, no emails received.
And just a note to Rod Sinks, clearly the guys from Cupertino are smarter than Saratoga because you figured out how to get your logo the correct direction in the background. And with that, we will move on to our CEO report. Gresh.
I think you chair. Let me see if I'm sharing this correctly. Can you see my presentation?
Yeah, we are seeing the exact view you have, which has your slides down the side. Okay, now we're seeing presenter view.
Okay.
Which is fine.
Yeah. Okay.
It's a little small for me. I'm on an iPad. So if, if possible, I'd prefer a bigger view, but I can live with it.
Got this now?
Unfortunately, that's so big that most of it's not showing on my screen.
How's this?
It's fine. Go with it. I'll just follow along.
Okay. I see some thumbs up and all right, we'll just go because I've kept it just to one slide. And I'll start off, I want to cover six different areas. And each of these, I'm not going to go into too much detail. Some of them will be covered in updates from staff today. And so I want to talk about internal operations. And that covers employees and remote meetings with the board and also continuity of operations on each of those areas. We have groups of staff working on it. And it's been working, I'd say, really as well as we can expect. We have reached out to our suppliers and our service providers as far as their business continuity.
Excuse me, Gresh?
Yes.
You're fading in and out when you're speaking.
Okay. I'm going to try again. Mary had a little lamb. Is that better? Okay, I said, I think it was my glasses hitting my mic. Sorry. So glasses will stay where they're supposed to be. So we have business continuity plans that we have requested from all our service providers. We have also reached out to our power suppliers, suppliers and schedulers. So those continue to come in. We will talk in one, in the next board item about increasing our capacity to mitigate some of the risk of one or more of us falling ill. And that's going to be something that we will continue to do as the weeks follow. Going to the next item, two of six, customer impacts. Two aspects to this. One is our customer demand has gone down. The data is still flowing in. We get data from PG&E that gets validated and verified only many days after real time, close to eight days after. So our current estimate, what we've seen for last week's demand has, it's, it's gone down by about 10% total. Residential demand has gone up a little more than 20%. Commercial demand has gone down a little more than 20% and industrial demand about 30%. These are all very interim numbers. We are still trying to put our hands around what that means for the short term, midterm and long term. On the other aspect of customer impacts, we have stopped turning customers over to PG&E. And we are not issuing late payment notices. This is statewide. All CCAs are doing so. And all municipal utilities and investor utilities are also doing this. We are all looking at ways in which we can determine, develop customer relief options right from the CPUC is interested in this. IOUs are looking at it. All CCAs and municipal utilities are looking at this too.
Gresh, one, one quick question. And I would have raised my hand, but I couldn't find the hand button. Sorry about that. What, what are we thinking the average increase in bill for residential customer is going to be with sort of the increased demand? Everybody staying at home? Are they all going to be paying 25% more and they're all going to get shocked in the middle of April when they get their first bill?
I think we are seeing a little more than 20%. And so, yeah, so we will be seeing, and this is just in the, yeah, we'll make an estimate of that, but it will be somewhere about 15% or so. You know, the first bill that people are getting, it's going to be prorated a little bit. I think it's going to be folks who get their bills three weeks, two to three weeks from now, who will have a whole week of, whole month of being at home. They're the ones who will see the biggest delta month to month.
Yeah, okay. It's just one of those weird economic dislocations. Google's bill will go down, but an individual's bill will end up going up.
Yes, and we will talk more about this in one of the items on media budget and outlook for the future. We will initiate the discussion with executive committee on how we can address that. Okay. Okay. And please jump in to ask questions at any time. And I'll keep going till I hear otherwise. How supply is the next issue, short, mid and long term? So obviously the load forecast impacts how we manage our portfolio. We are working with our scheduling coordinators right now, and we have daily updates on how they are scheduling into the ISO markets. I see a hand raise, Liz.
I am still having a great deal of difficulty here for you. I don't, you're working with the speaker on your computer or the speaker on your headset, but you're about every five, five words I hear you and the rest I barely hear you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm also noticing this. There must be something going on with your local connection.
Okay.
The video, the video seems continuous, but the audio level keeps going up and down dramatically through the course of the sentence.
Okay.
But I mean, I, so I've compensated by just turning up my volume.
Okay. Let me see if there's anything I can do on that right now. And I'm not sure I can. Sorry, has my screen gone away now?
No, no, that's much, it's, are they, you fade again. It's almost as if you're getting, coming close to the mic and getting away from the mic.
Okay. I'll try just holding it up at one point so it doesn't touch my shirt maybe. Okay, so I get, let's try that out for a little bit. Sorry about that. So we are looking at our short term, mid and long term. And this is going to be an evolving situation. But we are looking at all aspects of our power supply portfolio, including how we are hedging for next year and how we are managing our current year hedges. On the legislative and regulatory side, we have had a conversation along with other CCAs with the CPUC. We, as CalCCA and all CCAs in the state have come together, we are looking at what we want to prioritize with the PUC. The regulatory side continues to move forward with some delays on some compliance issues that we get into later on. On the legislative side, the official word is business as usual, and they will be coming back mid-April. I highly doubt that. I would expect in the next few weeks, we should be hearing more announcements about how this legislative session's priorities are going to change. But at this point in time, we continue to move forward with priorities such as our central reliability authority bill and our transparency bill. On decarbonization programs internally, we continue to move forward with that, albeit at a little slower pace. Yesterday, we had our first member agency working group meeting remotely. And we also had a Silicon Valley SV tech EV ecosystem meeting also. We have soft launched our utility API program. And next week, we will have a press release on that. At this point in time, the results have been astounding good. We actually have more suppliers and developers signed up to our program. It's getting into the high twenties, low thirties. It's more than I believe any other utility in the country outside of California. So we'll have more information for you that at the April eighth board meeting. CCA collaboration and CalCCA, we are working quite closely with every other CCA in terms of sharing information, talking about various priorities on each of the areas that I've talked to you about in this report. So there's a lot of sharing and learning from each other and collaborating. And that's been a very good, so a very, very useful asset for us. So with that, I am also, I'll end with saying that at the next board meeting, I'll be working with Howard closely to look at the agenda for the next board meeting. And given that we are working remotely, I would be moving maybe a few more items into the consent calendar than we normally would. Of course, all policy issues would still stay on the regular calendar. We will be looking at shortening our presentations, being more direct. I will have some. Look forward to getting your questions answered, especially factual questions prior to the meeting. So we can keep the meetings running smoothly. And with that, I'll end my CEO report and be open for any questions.
Anybody have questions?
Yes, please. This is Director Gibbons. This is just a technical question. The screen changed so that what I'm looking at is the actual PowerPoint slide page with all of the banners and the slides showing to the right. Where when we started out, I was looking just at the slide there. Okay, so at some point it switched. And two is I, I'm absolutely having a horrible time hearing Gresh. So.
The slides are always going to be under presenter control. And there are a couple of technical options that offline I can talk to Gresh about the way it's auto, auto changing your microphone volume. There's some buried settings in this app that help or hurt audio.
Okay.
Perfect.
If, if the recording, the record recording might need to be checked.
Perfect. That's great. And then we'll also look at how other folks are doing and we can isolate the problem to my technology or other areas. All right. There's nothing more. I'll hand it back to Howard.
Okay, so anybody have, Nancy has a question.
Yeah, I had my hand up. I think people aren't looking at that.
Oh, yes.
Nancy, I'll just say it's, it is really weird for me looking at a whole screen and little icons and pictures. And so I'll get better at it. I promise. But your hand is beautiful and I see it.
I'm not sure how I would even notice the hands up thing. I had a question regarding public input. So I'm, my concern is that because we're moving these meetings online and it sounds like you're planning to keep the same level of detail and depth in the agenda packet. How do we ensure that we are, you know, functioning and sufficient transparency for public agency? So if staff could give some thought to that. Yeah, so you know, that would be helpful. Some, some of the cities are trimming down their agendas to minimize the, you know, difficulties with public input.
I plan to minimize agendas too. So I'll work with Howard on that. So, for example, yeah, like I will be moving some items into consent. And I think we can also get into this in terms of an item we're going to bring to you later on the agenda on delegation of authority. I think that's a discussion we should have with the exec committee to see what then balances.
Okay, thanks.
And as far as public input, maybe Andrea can address how we are taking public input during the meeting.
Sure. So currently on our agenda, we state that people can send any public comment either to me via email if they're joining by phone or you can be a participant in the meeting in which they would raise their hand as well, similar to as you all are doing now. And we also have something currently on our executive committee website about public participation, which explains this process as well.
So Nancy, your hand was still up. Do you still have another question? Okay, go ahead, Nancy, if you've got a question. Unmute. Hands down now. Thumbs up. All good. Anybody else have any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Let me just double check. Is there any member of the public that wishes to speak? And Gresh, if I could ask you to turn off your slides. I am in an unenviable situation. Is there anybody out there who can hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, good. It all of a sudden went quiet. There were no speakers. So.
I think Gresh was on mute possibly.
Yeah, everybody went quiet.
Yeah, it was a stock share. I now have two screens I'm working with and yesterday I was working with one screen, so it was in a different spot.
Okay, let me back up slightly. Any member of the public wish to speak on the CEO report? And then double check with the clerk, was there any member of the public who has requested to speak from you?
No emails received.
Okay, so we're going to call that item closed. We will.
Howard.
Yes, who was that?
This was me. This was Rod.
Please.
Just a procedural suggestion. If we are, yeah, having difficulty with audio in a, particularly in a larger meeting format. What I've seen work well with this tech, this kind of technology is somebody's responsible in the meeting, maybe the clerk, maybe the chair, maybe somebody is muting and unmuting mics of the board members to take role and to take votes and other things. So rather than members having to fumble for the screen, some, some master is, is going around.
Helping.
So you as chair could say, for example, okay. Sinks, do you have anything to say? And I'm unmuted briefly and I make a comment and then you go round robin through. That worked well for us at the area district on Wednesday. That's it.
So we have Andrea online and we have Nick online in the background kind of facilitating. One thing that maybe might help people with mute and unmute. If you hit your spacebar, it's supposed to unmute you while you hold down the spacebar. And then when you let the spacebar up, it, it goes the other way. So that kind of helps make it much more efficient than trying to fumble around on the screen. If you want to leave it on permanently, kind of like I'm doing right now, then I click the button. Otherwise I try to use the spacebar.
For what it's worth, that does not work on my iPad, which I'm currently broadcasting from.
Yeah, I, I've used the iPad too. You are 100% correct. Okay, so I think we are done with the CEO's report. We're now going to go to our COVID-19 policy and delegation discussion.
Okay. Thank you, Howard. And good morning, fellow directors. Andrea is going to pull up the presentation for me. Okay, thank you. This is very brief item.
So that, one second. That direction of displaying the slides is perfect because it fills the whole screen.
That's why I had Andrea do it because I wouldn't have figured it out. Okay, so can you all hear me okay? So this actually was prompted from Sonoma Clean Energy, Sonoma Power. Earlier this month, when all the public health news was, was being released, they actually canceled a board meeting. And Jeff Cypher is the CEO of Sonoma. Has the same items that needs to get passed that we do, such as rates and, and power purchase agreements. And so they passed a resolution that would give the CEO delegation of authority in case a board meeting was canceled. Over the last couple of weeks, with the easing of the rules of the Brown Act and us getting more comfortable with this technology, I see it as a low probability that we'll be in a position where we have a board meeting canceled. But I think it's good to have the safety valve in place through a resolution that will present at the next board meeting. So that would allow Gresh to set rates, execute long-term PPAs or any, any other time sensitive contracts greater than 100,000 in case this board can't meet. And when you see the resolution, it won't just be a generic execute long-term PPAs. We'll be as specific as possible. We'll list the four PPAs right now that are under negotiations. We'll be as specific as possible with rates and any other contracts that, that the directors know are coming up that are time sensitive. We'll list those to the best that we can in the resolution and make it very specific. We'll also make this resolution have a 90-day life. And if we are still in the same situation 90 days from now, we'll discuss it then. So look for this as a action item on consent in the next board meeting. And then next slide. Thank you, Andrea. This was really already covered in the CEO report. So at the, as we try to get back to business as usual, until then, we'll, we'll pare down the, the items on the agenda. We'll put as much into consent as the, as the board feels comfortable with. And just keep the, the board meetings as brief as possible until we get back to business as usual. This was already covered in the CEO report. So with that, that's the report. Happy to take any questions.
Who has questions? So Liz?
So thank you. This may be covered in more detail going on, but basic principle is that most cities have an emergency operation plan. And as an organization, we don't, so that some of these policies and procedures will be handled ad hoc at the moment. But going forward, particularly, it would be useful, and I think Gresh is already working on that with Dawn, is having an emergency operation plan that goes into effect with the motion of the board, which outlines some of these things.
Yes, that's correct. We're planning to have a draft ready for the next board meeting.
Okay, are there any other questions? Okay, seeing none, then I think we move on. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak on this item? And I check with the clerk to see if any emails came in on this.
No emails received.
Okay, so this was just a discussion foreshadowing what's going to happen. So unless anybody's got any final thoughts, I'm going to move on to the next item, which is rates and budget outlook, which is also a discussion.
All right, thanks, Chair. This is Don Bray. I'm going to endeavor to share my screen here. Okay, I'm, do you all see a large version of the PowerPoint here?
I do not, Don. This is Andrea.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we're seeing it.
I can pull it up just a moment.
Why don't we do that? And then I have to get back out of this.
It's interesting because we saw that for I guess that was Andrea.
Okay, does everyone see the, see the screen now? The full PowerPoint?
Yes, I can see it.
Okay. Well, assuming that a yes from everyone, Andrea, I'll just indicate when to, when to toggle the slide forward if it isn't otherwise obvious. So, so yeah, the, the topic here this morning is a rate update that we'll need to make in May. We can go to the next slide. We're anticipating some pretty significant changes from PG&E late in April that will become effective May 1st. We are foreseeing a generation increase of about four tenths of a percent. So basically, gen rates are going to stay flat. And this was a bit of a positive surprise we got recently. We were previously anticipating a pretty significant reduction in rates. But it looks like they're going to be flat at least for the next few months. We are, however, still seeing a really significant increase in the PCIA of about 21% to an average of 3.2 cents per, per kilowatt hour. Importantly, we're seeing another really significant PCI increase later in the year. This is when the PCI becomes uncapped, I think all of you are familiar with, with that. The PCI would go to an average of about 4.9 cents. And for us to keep our rate competitive at that time, we'll need to lower rates even more significantly and we'll likely be drawing from reserves for as long as we have to keep that, that rate in effect to absorb 4.9 cent PCI. There are also, as you know, a lot of uncertainties in the market right now with COVID. Certainly through the balance of this fiscal year and potentially into next year. We're going to talk about an additional reserve set aside of, on the order of $8 million for targeted customer relief and, and community resiliency. So our, our discussion of a reserves target here will, we're, we're making in that context of, of setting aside another $8 million outside of the, the rate change that we need to make for, for relief. So what we're ultimately recommending is that we reduce our discount from 4% to 1% effective in May. This will result in a 5% decrease in SVCE generation rates. What the customer pays will still be going up by a percentage point or two, but we'll be decreasing our rates by 5%. And we're also proposing a, a guardrails mechanism, very much like what we did last year. If for some reason the, the changes come in differently than we've anticipated when we, when we get the orders in late April. This just summarizes a lot of the really extraordinary uncertainty that we have in the market at the moment. I'll, I'll pick on the top couple here. We're anticipating that customer payments are going to be delayed pretty broadly. In particular, in the residential and, and small and, and medium commercial segments. We're seeing the load loss numbers that Gresh mentioned earlier. And we also have an excess supply situation to deal with. Of course, we buy energy in advance. We're going to have to sell that. We're going to have to sell that actually back into the market that we're long on. And we will have some losses associated with that. I mentioned the PCI earlier, the the big shift that we're going to see, anticipate seeing late in the year. So these are, these are just a few of the big uncertainty and risk items that we're facing in the market at the moment. Next slide. So just to take you through the changes to the rates, we were anticipating a 6.6% reduction in PG&E rates as as recently as the November, December timeframe. The most recent information we've received in a PG&E advice letter indicated that that's going to be more like a 4/10 of a percent increase. We've checked with a lot of other sources who seem to be coming together around that number. So when we see the actual rates of late April, we're we're thinking that's pretty close to where they'll be. The impact of a 4/10 of a percent increase to our rate using the rate impact formula is 6/10 of a percent. And what that means is that if the only change we had, if PCI stayed exactly where it is today, and the gen rate went up from PG&E by 4/10 of a percent, we could increase by 6/10 of a percent. And we'd be even with where we are today. We maintain the same 4% discount, and we'd have the same financial result in the end. So that's that's how this rate impact notion works. Next slide. So same same rate impact calc for the PCI change. Unfortunately, this takes us in a in a different direction. The PCI going up by 21.2% results in a negative 8.5% impact to our rates. So all things being equal, we'd have to lower our rate by 8 and 1/2% to to maintain our current discount. And okay, next slide. So putting these things together, the gen rate increase.
Hang on one second. Liz, Liz, you had a hand up?
I'll wait to the end.
Okay. So putting the the two things together, the the overall net impact of the the gen rate change and the PCI change. 8%. So in April, if we wanted to maintain our 4% discount to our customers that we have today, we would have to reduce our generation rates across the board by by 8%. Okay, next slide. So, Don, if if you're on, you want to talk about the budget impact of not not just the perspective rate change, but also of the the load loss due to COVID?
All right, thank you, Don, and good morning again, fellow directors. So if you look at the top, the column to the far left, the adopted budget. So six months ago, when we brought the budget to you, we have a surplus of 50.6 million projected. However, we knew that there were some assumptions at risk. For instance, the PG&E generation rate, we assumed no change because there was just so much uncertainty at the time. The PCI, again, we knew something was going to change, didn't know where it was, didn't want to make the board suffer through the rates fatigue that happened the year before. So and certainly with load, we kept the load flat, thinking that was a conservative estimate at the time. Certainly, that scenario has changed. So fast forward six months, the PG&E generation rate, as Don mentioned, looks to be near flat. However, that's not a consensus amongst CCA. Some are thinking it's still going to go down some and then increase later in the year. We've checked with MRW and PEA consultants, and they both agree that, at least for this fiscal year, we should not see a change, significant change in PG&E generation rates. So we feel comfortable going with that assumption, but that could change. On the PCI, there is consensus amongst the CCA's that it is going up to the cap starting May 1st. And then the third variable is loss of load. So Garish talked about in the CEO report, the what we're seeing in the early numbers, something around 10 to 12% reduction in load, and it's early. Well, we'll have to still refine those numbers and and see where it lands. But for now, for this for this discussion, staff feels comfortable that somewhere between 10 and 20% is where that load loss is going to land. So we just took 15%, really not much more magic than that. But to err on the side of being conservative, we carried that 15% through the rest, that load loss through the rest of the fiscal year. Obviously, we hope we're wrong, but even if, let's say, things get back to normal end of April, the economy won't just switch on immediately. There'll be some ramp up time. So we're erring on the side of caution there and carrying this out for the next six months. Having said that, you can look at the various discount options and what that would do to our projected surplus for the end of this fiscal year. So in the case of if you want to have 0% discount and be at the same rate as PG&E, then we'd be looking at close to about a $30 million surplus. And at the 1%, which is what staff is recommending, about a 28 million. And if you look down to 4%, every one of these options looks like, okay, we're still at a surplus. Is there any differentiation between any of them besides a few million between each discount? And to help answer that, can we go to the next slide, Don? Thank you. So the blue shaded area would be our targeted reserves. So we ended last fiscal year, last September 30th, with 119 million of unrestricted cash. If I look at next fiscal year, right now, my projected expenses is about 270 million. That means I would like to end this fiscal year with 135 million in the bank, which would be our target of 180 days cash on hand. So if I want to have that target of 135 billion at the end of this fiscal year, and I ended last year with 119, I'm looking to inject somewhere between 16 to 20 million into reserves this year. If we if we go with the 1% discount, then we achieve, in my opinion, that balance between sustainability of the business and and rate pair value. And that we can have 20 million injected into reserves, and we hit our target. And we're prepared for it, what I think is going to be a very rocky fiscal year 21 that Don's already mentioned in his bullet points. But also, at the same time, that would leave us 8 to 10 million leftover that we could use for various community programs or customer resiliency. And Garish will talk more about that at the end of the presentation, or Don, on some of the ideas there. But that would give us some cash that we could set aside to be able to help out the community during these unprecedented times. And next slide. Thank you, Don. So just our outlook, we know revenues are going to be reduced. We're still uncertain about what that load loss or the duration of the the load loss is going to be. But we know that revenues are going to be reduced from where we started the year at. However, when we come back to you with a mid-year budget in May for the board meeting, most of the time, when I when I think about this from a city's view or even a special district view, when you see a cut in revenues, you're also probably going to want to start looking at cuts in expenses. Most likely brings you a a budget that's going to be flat on expenses in May, just because we don't have that large fixed cost to cut from. So 92 cents of of every dollar that goes out the door is related to power supply. So when we bring to you that amended budget in in May, most of the changes you're going to see are going to be on the revenue side. We may have to use some of the permanent savings we've achieved for the first six months of this year to pay for strengthening our bench, for instance, as we've gone through developing this emergency plan. We can see that there are some areas that we want to put some extra funding in. Also, there's some uncertainty on the power supply side. Preliminary numbers show me that we're going to be okay as far as selling hedge power back to CAISO, but that still needs to play out. And we definitely want to have some contingency in there for that as well. So as we bring to you an amended budget, don't look for a one-for-one cut on the operating expense side. And Don talked about this, I think hitting our reserve target at the end of this fiscal year would position us well for what I think is going to be a very challenging fiscal year 21. With that, Don, I'll defer it back to you.
All right, thanks, Don. Next slide, Andrea. Okay, you may recall from last year, we had set up this discount framework, again, in in the case that the PCI or gen rate changes don't come in in late April, exactly as we've anticipated. What we are showing here is that if the net rate is basically a percent, a negative 7% or or greater, meaning more negative, we would, under the the way this example framework is set up, we would keep to our recommended 1% discount. If things came in better than anticipated, if gen rates, say, went up from PG&E more than 4/10 of a percent, or if the PCI didn't go up as much as we thought it was, then we would look at at not reducing our discount by as much. So you see how the the formula works here. The way it 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 sets up, it essentially pivots around a 5% reduction in rates and a $28 million contribution to reserves this year. And then, of course, if it's less than 8% or less, I'm sorry, greater than 8% negative or less than 5% negative, it would go outside those bounds. So that's how the the framework works. We'd like to recommend this as the way to go, just so that we can implement this rate change as rapidly as possible after May 1st, before the the board meeting in May. Right, next slide. So just to summarize, our recommendation is to direct CEO and staff to implement this rate change such that we have a reserve contribution of $20 million or $28 million. And then we plan out of that 8 million for relief programs. So the net contribution to reserves would be 20 million. We would move to a 1% discount effective May 1st. And we would direct the CEO to develop a customer relief and community resilience programs for the other May board meeting, if if not sooner. So that's it. Open for for questions at this point.
Okay, Liz actually asked the first question. So Liz, and then Nancy.
Thank you. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. So going back to Don's early comments about the PCI. Again, with the legislation legislature not being in place, it may be difficult, but how how are we work? So there's two questions. How are we working with the CPUC about this PCI black hole? Because it seems to me, and I've said this numerous times, that that PG&E is taking advantage of the PCI black box approach to try and recoup money beyond where they should be doing. And is there any recognition or process that the CPUC that can help us with this? Because you're saying not only are we going to hit, get this hit, 21% hit from May 1st, but we'll get something above the cap in October.
I may 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 call on Garish here that the 21% in May is is pretty much a for sure. But this massive increase at the end of the year, I know is something that CCA.
Why don't I address that?
Right, thank you.
Okay, Liz, how is this now? Can you hear me better?
Yeah.
Okay, so I've gone off my mic and just using my computer's mic directly. Hopefully, this will be better. So the second, this trigger is expected to come in in Q4. We have talked to the CPUC about aligning that with their next PCI update, which would be January of 2021. So basically delaying it a few months. Given that their annual rate doesn't actually take effect in January, it usually is just like what we're talking about right now, April or May before gets implemented. That's what we are asking for. We have not heard anything official. This is part of the CCA prioritization. This is one of the priorities we have, one of the top five priorities with the PUC. We have also talked about it in terms of affordability in this time of crisis, that we don't want an additional hit. We'll see what happens. It is a priority. On the legislative side, we will also bring it up. We have a transparency bill that we have introduced, CalCIA sponsoring. And part of that is to look into the black box and get more details on what actually is pushed into the PCI.
So if I may, I appreciate what you're saying. This is a good example. This is our typical critiquing what would you would present to the board. I would suggest that in Don's presentation, he has a very brief highlight that there are things going on behind the scenes that are addressing this. We're working, the presentation is focusing on the decisions that we're making. But it's important for the board to know that these other measures are underway. Okay. The second question I had is this going, I have no problem going to the 1%. I'm almost wondering if we shouldn't just match PG&E. And for me, it's a psychology of for the people that are suffering. Are we, and we're thinking of doing special programs. Is there something that would be useful now to just, and I'm not sure which way to go. Is there something that would be useful now to just match PG&E so that we have more flexibility down the road? So I would like some discussion on that, so that when we present it to the board. I think it doesn't hurt to say, Matt, have a discussion. I understand the this is simplicity of the message to the board is the 4% where we are and the recommendation to go to the 1%. But I think the focus might also need to be, depending on what others here say, of course, going to match PG&E. And maybe that's where the board discussion is. I don't think the board is going to have any problem going from the 4% to the 1%. I'm wondering if we should talk more about 1% to matching. And if we can go to Don's table that showed that, well, we can all look in our slides. I had a little trouble understanding the table that had the 28 million to all. Yeah, number 10, slide number 10. Yeah. I got a little lost in this table when everything projected contribution was all 28 at the bottom or on the far right. So I'm not sure this table helps a lot. But in any rate, some of that's my point. My conversation is, in terms of what to present to the board, what are people's and this group's thought about the discussion of matching PG&E versus the 1%?
Okay, are you good, Liz? We'll move on to Nancy.
I was hoping for a discussion.
Well, I'll respond. I don't understand your reasoning for why we should keep it the same rate as PG&E. That would be a change of policy for the board, which is a broader discussion, which is why staff brought it forward the way they did. And it looks like, so you know, that's.
So I don't think it's a change in policy.
I think right now we're less than PG&E is our policy, so.
All right. I didn't, I didn't think it was that clear cut. All right.
I think it's in our, I believe that it's in our strategic goals. That it's written down in our strategic goals. I believe, I could be mistaken. But I believe it's actually public as a stated goal. So there, it would be a change. I agree that the chart on page 11 is, I mean, page 10 is, it could be a little bit more. The blue arrow isn't clear. It's pointing at a line, like an actual line, not like a column or a row, I mean. So maybe bump that up a bit to make it more clear what staff is recommending, if that's possible. And then on page 11, on slide 11 with the recommendations, I'm, I'm finding this. I mean, I see that, I see that staff needs direction from the board. What I don't, what I'm not clear on is what the timeline is for making those decisions. So if I understand, will, a lot of this will come forward in the May board meeting? And will it be queued up in the, in the April board meeting? And secondly, how much of this will be addressed in our budget process? Since we're coming up on that? Or is it going to be a special decision, like a special off-cycle? I think respond.
Hi, this is Don. I could just answer the budget question. So on the operating expense side, I don't see many changes. I think what I'm waiting for before we amend the budget would be to have that direction on rates and then also give me a little more time to see what that load loss numbers we should be using for forecast. So timing of the amended budget would be at the May board meeting. And correct me if I'm wrong, Donna Grish, but the timing of the rate change would be to take this to the April board meeting to be effective May 1st, because CALCCA needs about two weeks to implement those rates. But correct me if I'm off.
Yeah, no, that's correct, Don. The, again, if we don't change rates in, in May or as of, as close as we can to May 1st, then customers are going to see a big increase. They're gonna, they're gonna see that new PCI in effect, right? Until we can lower our rates by 5% or whatever we ultimately agree on. So yeah, I should have made that clear in the presentation. Similar to how we did the rate roll last year, we would like to have direction from the board a month before the rate change takes effect on the, the board's desires relative to our discount level. So that's where that discount framework came in. You know, if PCI or gen rates from PG&E.
Okay. Yeah.
That would alter it according to that framework.
Okay, that's, that's helpful. I do think that the impact on customers could be more clear, clearly defined, that that's why we're taking action in April. And assuming that we do, which I think we should.
Let me add to one other question you had, Nancy, about whether this is part of the budget cycle. This is actually kind of our typical cycle for rates. I think in the early days, we thought that PG&E would actually change rates in January. So we would come to you in that January, February timeframe. But each year, we see it takes longer for them to get their act together. So we factored this into our budget already. And so I think it's more very typical kind of timing. And our budget cycle actually ends in September. So we'll be starting next year's budget cycle only in June.
So, yeah, I appreciate that input. I think it's, it's aligning actually not badly with our regular cycle. So to the extent that, that, that we can make it, I think, a normal part of doing business, that sends a different message than, you know, kind of dire response to, you know, what happened with the, with the economy recently. So I don't know how you want to frame that, but it's just, it's, as I was looking through this, I was thinking this could be handled as part of kind of a normal cycle, oddly enough. So do you have any thoughts about how to present it?
Yeah, we'll frame it. I think we've already got some suggestions from Liz so far on how to present. You've also added some additional suggestions, so we will add that. I think framing it, this is normal cycle. We have been updating through the CEO report that this is coming. So we will make that clear in the presentation in terms of our timeline. I think the only change here is it's all the variables changing versus timing. Timing of a rate change, this was going to be the timing anyway. I think it's the, some of the revenue impacts that are different.
Right. Okay, thanks. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy. So we're going to go to Margaret.
Thank you. I just had a question more about the customer relief programs, or if you do have some sense of what you're thinking we would do there. In our city, we have a special council meeting tonight, and we're talking about like a deferment program for our residents. So I'm just wondering how our SVEC program, what that might be looking like.
Great. So we have quite a few thoughts around this. I'll frame it as we are balancing our business financial viability with how much we can support our customers. When I look at this, I also think anything we do, you know, we need to match the business viability with support with customers. And also look at are there actions we may be having to take outside of the next two months too? For example, we're going to have PSPS events coming in July. So we're looking at it more a little bit for the next year or so. And the way we can do the most good is through having resources and resources boil down to money and how we can help our customers. Internally, we are looking at a variety of ideas. Some other criteria we're using are, we don't want to necessarily duplicate efforts that are already being undertaken. We know that the stimulus from the feds is going to be flowing down very shortly. We are plugged in as a count, as a CCA group through CALCCA. Look at some joint applications to tap into those stimulus funds. So then when we start to look at what we want to do, we are also saying, okay, is there something we can do that will help customers in the short run, but also help with our overall mission to the extent? That's a secondary goal, but it's something to keep in mind. So I'll tell you a few things that we've come up with. And this is one of the reasons we would like to get more input from the board and then come back in May or earlier with some actions. I would like to propose that the actions we take are more of a portfolio or a set of actions versus a one-shot deal. So here are some ideas. One is CARE and FARA, which is the acronym for customers who are on a discounted rate due to their income status. Some support for them. Is there a way of tapping into lower commercial and industrial bills? So some of our larger customers are paying less for energy. Is there a way of leveraging that with our large customers? Workforce development. We know that there are a lot of workers right now who are at home and they can't actually go out and get something going. So we are looking at, well, should we maybe offer to pay some of those who are not working right now to undertake training on decarbonization skills? Can we look at donating directly to food banks? Donating to frontline organization, frontline workers, including hospitals, nurses, utility workers, and families? Cash for plunkers, you have that whole program, you had cash for plunkers. Is there a way in which we can target some money for getting IC engine cars off and providing a very large rebate on EV electric vehicles? Volunteer ours for our staff when things are safer to actually go in and help the community. So this is a portfolio approach of, you know, we'd like to really think about this. So we've opened it up to all staff to provide ideas, and we are collecting those right now. And between now and April 8th, you know, obviously, anyone on the board, please continue to give us your ideas. And we'd like to discuss it with the board. We'll have a better idea of what that portfolio is going to look like. I'll end with saying we are also working with other CCAs to find out what they're doing. And so, you know, trying to imitate the best ideas and then modifying it for our customer base.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Rod?
Thanks very much. So I was looking at the slide that I have up on another screen here. So you don't, you don't need to bring it up for my purpose. Budget impact of load and rate changes, alternative discount scenarios. It's number, labeled number seven in the bottom. And I, I was trying to understand what the, what the line with the arrow, somewhere around 38,000, 1,000, what that was about.
So the, the arrow was meant to indicate going from a 4% to a 1% discount, that that would be the difference in what would be contributed to reserves?
Oh, I see. The fact that it's sitting at a certain level there on the graph, 38,000 has no significance.
The, we, we could have made this clear. We've now gotten this input from several folks. Yeah, it was just meant to be, to illustrate the 4 to 1%.
Yeah, I might, I might drop it. It was distracting to me. I was just trying to figure out what that was about, if it was some baseline.
Yeah.
You know, you could do that maybe with a different color or, I don't know. Okay. And when you were talking about what happened starting in October, you said that we would be draining our reserves. Do we know at what rate we would be draining our reserves? How much, how many dollars per month? Given your forecast on load and everything else?
Hi, thank you, Director Singh. So this is Don. I know right now would be where PG&E generation rates are going for next year. But looking at the increase in the PCI, we probably would be looking at around 10 million dip into reserves next fiscal year.
Or, I mean, could I just, okay, 10 million over a 12-month period?
Over a 12-month period, yes.
Okay. I mean, I hate having to dip into reserves, but we have reserves because there's so many uncertainties. So, I mean, that's not, I mean, the fact that we're having to dip into reserves is of concern to me, but maybe not alarming at that rate. What's more alarming is that PG&E would continue a policy that would have us, what, more than double the PCI through the course of this year? If they increase it 21%, and then it's what, another 100%? It's, it's really an astonishing change that we have to absorb. I do think if we're talking about beginning to look at draining our reserves this year, we ought to be moving swiftly to not remove, I think, but certainly reduce the difference in our, reduce our discount to PG&E effective ASAP. And I do, however, like having a small discount because I think it's, it's a good story. You know, not all CCAs have, have elected or been fortunate to be able to have a discount. I think it's a powerful message that we continue to send if we can, if we can afford that discount. I also think, and I'm very supportive of, you know, Margaret mentioned this too, the idea that we could be thoughtful in, in the, and creative with the kinds of programs that might be a good use of funds in this time. You know, I think grid resilience and sustained power, God only knows what would happen here if this sequester continued in the fall. And then we had wildfire to deal with. And then we had PSPS events. I mean, a lot of things could complicate our continued sustenance in the Bay Area and in Northern California. So I think there's a lot of fragility right now. And I, you know, appreciate the initiatives that we've made toward grid resilience. We have, when we set our cities association priorities at the beginning of the year, we talked a lot about concerns residents had. So this is well before the current situation was present with us, but, or that we knew it was coming. But, you know, the idea that the grid could be shut off for many days in a row. And PG&E's response to this was, well, we'll build some fossil fuel-based generation plants in your communities. I think, you know, I'm certainly interested in having a better response to the problem that wildfires have continued possible and likely, let's say, PSPS events might bring us. I think we need a better response. And maybe that's a little off-topic, but I, I think we need to hold our powder dry and accumulate the reserves we can while we can so that we have money to do all these other important things. So I appreciate the, I appreciate all the thought that's going into trying to be creative about what we, what new things we can do with programs. Thanks.
Thanks, Rod. Liz has got her hand up, but let me make a couple of comments first. I think that being slightly less than PG&E is still valuable to us as an organization. I agree with Rod's comments. We're going to get back to these PSPs. We're going to get back to these PSPs short enough and our citizens are going to be highly agitated in that space as well. So I think as we look at programs, we've probably got to figure out something to address both. And then just in terms of the execution of this particular item, I just have to multiply by 13. And I am not exactly sure the system, but I know when we sit on the dais, we can kind of look at each other to wrap it up and close it up. But when I sit here in this digital forum, it's, it's harder to get everybody to get succinct so that we can move along in an expeditious fashion. So I'm not sure what I'm going to say, but I will say something at the board meeting to try and make it, see if there's a way that we can focus. Liz, you had another comment? You gotta unmute first.
There you go. So I think to your comment just now, I'm remembering that this is in fact a working group. It's not like a board meeting. So I think it's important that we be able to have dialogue and perhaps not be quite so succinct if we need to, to, to talk things through. The board meeting, I think, of course, is going to be different. But my question here is going back to the slide from Dawn Gray, which was assume the COVID-19 load reduction and the discount to PG&E slide. I actually think that it's as overthought slide. I think what you really are trying to say to, for the board is that we have an adopted budget. And if we assume 15% reduction for the fiscal year, our revenue would go down. And I think that's supposed to be, and this is what I couldn't tell the chat was trying to say. If the 0123 are the PG&E discounts, it doesn't matter because this slide is really just trying to, to tell the board where we are at, right? And then if you want to have another line which says, based on the recommendation of going to a 1% discount, this is what our revenue loss would be. I don't think you need the 2%, 3%, and 4%.
Thank you. Yeah, that makes sense. I think the 4% does say, okay, that we're currently at 4%. If we did do nothing with the discount, that's what we're going to most likely end the year at. But to your, to your point with the, with the other bars, I agree. We could make that simpler.
So, Don Eckert, sorry. The, I guess what I'm trying to ask you is, are we trying to put too much information in one slide? You've got the budget impact of COVID and the budget impact of the rate changes. I mean, isn't the board, wouldn't the board as a whole want to know what if we, this is where, this is what would happen going forward for the rest of the year with a 15% reduction on our budget. Okay, so this is where we are at. And now we're having a discussion on the discount rate. And I forget the sequence here, but if your presentation, Dawn Bray's, and the recommendation is 1%, then I think all you need is the 1%.
I, I follow you. So more of showing what those impacts are and then the 1%.
Right.
I understand.
You, you don't need, I always love it because what you guys do in this, these presentations is you, you kind of go through your thought process. And it gives us an opportunity to just say, yes, we now understand why you're doing what you're doing. But in terms of the board as a whole, just keep it simple.
Good comment, thanks.
Okay, does anybody have any other questions? Let's look to the members of the public. Any comments from members of the public?
No comments.
Anything come in from our board clerk?
No emails received on this item.
Okay. I'll just make a quick closing comment, which is this item, there's a lot of details in it as noted. But what I believe staff's going to be asking for is the authority to make the decision within these bounds so that we can stay on a timeline. So for those of us who are more experienced, we may end up guiding some of our newer board members who haven't seen the process before. But my assessment, once we set the parameters, this will happen just like it did last year. Okay, so with that, I think let's close out on that item and let's move along to the IRP.
Can you guys hear me okay? This is Monica. Yep, I'm going to ask Andrea to drive the presentation.
Just one moment while I pull it up.
So while she's doing that, many of you have kind of followed along on the, our journey to developing a 2020 IRP to submit to the CPUC. It's been a bit of a, of a challenge in just keeping up with the CPUC's ever-changing requirements. And so today's presentation is fairly short and is really just intended to give you an update on where we are with respect to developing and bringing in an IRP to the board for approval. So next slide, thank you. So that you can recall, we've done quite a bit of modeling. We started this effort back in October, November of 2019. We've looked at six distinct portfolios of clean resources that would get us to our carbon-free goals. We measured those portfolios against three metrics, decarbonization, reliability, and affordability. And then we identified a preferred portfolio that we had intended to include or intend to include as our preferred portfolio where we submit our IRP to the CPUC later this year. So that portfolio basically has incremental distributed energy resources in it, solar plus storage, much of which we're already pursuing through our procurement efforts and have already put in our portfolio through our past procurement efforts. Wind, geothermal, which you approved to new geothermal resource projects. That is new to us, one is existing and one is new. And then large hydroelectricity. So our intent was for the portfolio that we put forward to meet all compliance obligations as provided for in the IRP requirements that are set by the CPUC. Next slide, Andrea. So what's new? Yesterday, the CPUC issued a ruling with respect to the IRP that laid out some new requirements and put in front of us a new submission deadline. So we've now been pushed out to September 1st, 2020 to submit our IRP. If you recall, it was once due May 1st, and then it was due July 1st. And now it's due September 1st. And so more time could be a good thing for us. Or, you know, it just allows us more opportunity to look at different things. One of the issues that we're struggling with is we can't just move forward and do additional analysis at this point because we really have to wait for the CPUC to put out their submission templates, which should have been out by now. In fact, we had been waiting for them for some time now. And through the ruling, they basically informed that they will be submitting or issuing those templates May 11. So once we have the, the templates in hand, we have a better sense of exactly what we have to put in our IRP in order to meet compliance obligations. One of the things that, another thing that the ruling set forth is that we now have to submit two portfolios that meet 20, 30 greenhouse gas and gas reduction goals as set or a target set for the electric utility sector. They want us to look at a portfolio that achieves a 46 million metric ton reduction or goal, I'm sorry, and a 38 million metric ton goal. Now, the good thing for us is that the preferred portfolio that we set forth is intended to be a 100% clean, that is zero emissions on an annual basis. So that portfolio should be able, well, it will be able, in theory, to meet both these targets. One area of concern though, that the CPUC has specifically identified for all load serving entities such as ours, if you're going to put forth a portfolio that is carbon-free like ours, they want an explanation as to how we're going to meet the integration and ramping needs associated with that portfolio and not rely purely on the market. So we'll need to think a little bit more about what we submit as our preferred portfolio in light of that requirement. The CPUC's ruling also said that you cannot include PG&E allocations as a preferred resource. And we had never intended to do that. We had always intended to put forth a plan that doesn't necessarily have the allocations, but in the narrative of IRP, we would talk about how the allocations could help us achieve our greenhouse gas reduction goals in an affordable manner. And then last, it also requires that we demonstrate how we're going to plan for the shutdown of Diablo Canyon from a, mainly from a reliability standpoint. So we'll need to talk to that as well in our IRP. So long story short, we have an opportunity to do a little more analysis and a little more thinking about what we're going to send to the CPUC in September. Andrea, the next slide. So this is just an update. The board has seen this several times of where we stand today in terms of procurement and moving forward with our IRP. So in April, at the board meeting, I guess in a couple of weeks, we'll bring to you a request to approve a delegation of authority to Gharish to accept a 2020, only 2020 for now, allocation of PG&E's carbon-free resources. This is based on an assumption that the CPUC is going to approve a resolution come May 8th, basically allowing for that interim allocation. And then we will also bring another update on the clean procurement efforts and IRP. And then in May, we hope to bring you one to two new solar plus storage PPAs. This COVID-19 crisis is making things a little more complicated in negotiating the solar plus storage resources. We're seeing supply chain disruptions, labor disruptions. And so all of that is feeding into the developers relooking at their CODs and whether or not they can meet the ones that, that we're planning or targeting for in our negotiations. And then I think we'll also be bringing to you a, a direction or a discussion and perhaps approval of a longer-term allocation strategy for carbon-free and RPS resources out of PG&E's portfolio. In June, we hope to have the last set of solar plus storage PPAs and then draft IRP. This would be the actual document that we bring to you. And then we'll bring it to you for approval finally in August and then submit it to the CPUC by the September 1st deadline. And then again, we have this other long-term hydro resource that we will hope to bring to you in August or September. So with that, I will take questions, if any.
Does anybody have any questions? I have a, a quick one, Monica. So if they're going to make it harder on us because we say we're carbon-free, well, why don't we add in one pound of carbon and then we won't be carbon-free? And then do we have to do that extra runaround?
Well, I think what we, what internally we've been talking about doing is producing a portfolio that basically just has our RPS resources plus any long-term committed large hydro. And so it would, it would show that we have system emissions. It's not our preferred portfolio, but it's one that we believe would meet the, the benchmark standard of reducing to, to meet the greenhouse gas goal set by 2030. So we believe that just by, just by showing our long-term RPS procurement, we're going to meet those targets anyway. And so I think that's what we'll submit as an alternative portfolio.
Excellent. Okay, Liz, you have a question?
Yes, thank you. So thinking about the board. So my question is, with all due deference to Monica, you've done such a great job keeping the board informed. To date, I think we've had some excellent discussions on the IRP that I'm questioning, maybe we don't need quite so much presentation on this item for this coming board meeting, thinking that this one's going to be a kind of a learning curve and difficult for everybody. I think you said your summary is things are being extended. We don't have to have it till September. We're being delayed by not having the model, blah, blah, blah. You could probably summarize just a few things like that. And then I think, is there anything about the COVID-19 situation that's impacting the IRP or might? What is it about this that we really, the board really needs to know at this point? That's my, my question to the group.
Maybe I'll jump in on this one?
Yeah.
So, yeah, we will, what I'm thinking is we'll provide an update through the CEO report with a better, with a better mic by then. So it's clear and we'll keep it really short. You're exactly right, Liz. Given that this has been pushed, we don't need any action per se on this. While we are talking about procurement, I'll just tee up that we are going to be bringing up the allocation of PG&E's GHG free resources of large hydro and nuclear. I plan on bringing it to the board for action in April. PG&E just filed the resolution that they needed to make with the CPUC two days ago. So that's set the clock with the CPUC. And so that's the only thing on procurement that will bring in for action.
Any other questions that anybody has? Seeing none, let me see, is a member of the public have any comment? And then double checking with the board clerk. Any email comments come in on this item?
No comments received.
Okay. Nothing stops, including IRP planning. And now that the dates later, you know, more time, I may or may not be good. It just seems like more requirements too. Okay, so we're good with this item. Let's move along. The last one is board succession planning, communications, orientations, et cetera.
Thank you, Chair. This is Andrea. I'll be giving this presentation. So this item is being brought to you as a follow-up from our meeting last month where you all provided feedback to staff on some ideas for board succession and continuous education. So we just wanted to update you on our progress as a result of that meeting. So our board succession planning, if you recall, we had an exercise where we showed you these five draft questions and you provided some feedback to us. These questions are intended for us as staff to ask current board members about the learning tools and techniques that were useful to them for their time serving on the board. So as you see, we've made some changes in red here. Questions one and two, we bronzed it a bit. Question three, we included a, what gave you your first oh no moment that was suggested by Director Smith? And we've asked members how this board differs from their council or other agency boards that they've served on to give some insight to any new members that are joining and what this board might entail. So we've made those changes and we wanted to show that to you. The next step for this would be us contacting you, of course, and getting these answers and responses in preparation for incoming board members in December. The second exercise that we did last month was regarding our desk reference tool that we're developing. This is intended to be an online resource for you all. Some of the feedback we received were, include fewer concepts, make it not so overwhelming. Term that was used was tier zero to really start from the bottom and work our way up. And with that, we have come up with some of these. Again, thank you for your feedback because a lot of those are included here. This is pretty broad, S V C E focused, mission statement, strategic plan. Where do our funds come from and where do they go? How and why were we established? So this is really just condensed and this is what we are planning on starting with. We think this will be a process. So this is kind of the first group of questions that we will focus on and then we will build on them as time goes on. And next step for this is the procedural part. It's really coming up with how are we going to develop this and how are we going to make it accessible for everyone? And with that, I am happy to take any questions.
Yeah, this looked great. I think it helps a lot from where we started at the last meeting. Do others have questions on this?
I was just going to say, I think we all learned the last presentation, and where we are now is great.
Okay, excellent. Any other questions? Any member of the public wish to comment on this? And then Andrea, I know it puts you into double duty to ask, did we get any members of the public's comments on this one?
We did not.
Okay, excellent. Any final thoughts on this one from any of the board members?
Yeah, this is, this is Rod. I, I really like the idea of suggesting that board members go through a high-level view, and yeah, maybe there are videos or tutorials or slides that help people go through the business of the, of S V C E at a high level, and then as people are interested, give them the ability to drill down on certain topics like a tree, right? But I think people come in with different levels, much varied levels of knowledge and experience, and you got to let them crawl the tree as their aptitude and knowledge increases, and that may come even a year, two, or three into their tenure. Thank you.
Thanks, Rod. Anybody else? Seeing none, I want to thank staff. This is actually a huge deal for us, and it's a totally non-virus-related, which is pleasing right now. And so we're going to call that one to a close, and then any final comments or staff remarks? Well, seeing none, I want to thank everybody for being here with us today. I got to say, it is a challenge trying to keep everybody straight, but I think we did a pretty good job this time, and we're going to get to do it for real when we have the entire board before us. It promises to be trying, but we're going to make it all work. I think that's all we have, so I think we're going to just adjourn the meeting here. Thank you, guys.